What's that?
For your shoe.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. I call the meeting of March 10th, 2020 to order. And may I ask, Member Don Pachowski, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Followed by invocation, please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For invocation, may I ask Pastor Bruce Anderson from Winfield Community United Methodist Church to lead us in invocation. Pastor?
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we give you thanks for the opportunity together this day to do the work of governance and of your kingdom. I give you thanks for these people who have taken it upon themselves to be the leaders of DuPage County, working for the good of all its residences and businesses. I pray that they will act thoughtfully and prayerfully as they plot the course of this great county into the future. Lord, as we face the uncertainties of the coronavirus outbreak, I pray that you would help us to be prepared but not panicked. Let us be ready, willing, and able to respond to the needs of our most vulnerable population if the virus becomes active in our area, but not fearful and isolated. Lord, I pray that you would guide us each and every day into your future, that we might bless all those we meet and recognize the opportunities you give us to be your servants. For in your word you tell us that those who want to become great must be servants, and whoever wants to be first must be servant of all. Lord, help us to live this day for you. Help us to be charitable when we are short of patience, and to be gracious in the face of adversity. Let us live in love for you and respect for our neighbor, even when we are not able to agree. Help us to see that we all seek to do what we believe is right, and that we all struggle with burdens that are not obvious to others. Help us to bear these burdens with grace and not grow weary of doing good, being just, and walking humbly with you, our God, and our neighbors. Bless us to bless others and lead us ever along the paths of righteousness for the sake of our communities, this county, and your kingdom. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin here. Holberg here.
Desart. DeCiani. Eckhoff. Elliott. Hart. Healy. Kuduski. Larson. Noonan. Ozak. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. All present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item of business is entitled "Public Hearing." Public hearing pursuant to the requirements of Section 10 and 20 of the Bond Issuance Notification Act of the State of Illinois, as amended on the plans to reissue revenue refunding bonds, or more commonly referred to as the Morton Arboretum Project Series 2020 in the amount not to exceed $52,000. Fifty-two million, forgive me, forgive me, forgive me. Yes, I know. Thank you. Fifty-two million dollars. So with that, I'd like to call this hearing to order, ladies and gentlemen. Let the record reflect that this is a public hearing being held pursuant to the requirements of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended. Notice of this hearing was published on February 21st, 2020, in the Naperville Sun, newspaper of general circulation in the county of DuPage, Illinois. This is a hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed $52 million in aggregate principal amount of the county's revenue refunding bonds, the Morton Arboretum Project Series 2020. The proceeds of the bond will be lent to the Morton Arboretum, a trust established under the trust indenture of the Morton Arboretum dated December 14, 1922, as amended, which is recognized as exempt from federal income tax under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. This is the borrower. To I refund and redeem the county's outstanding variable rate demand revenue bonds, the Morton Arboretum Project Series 2003, commonly referred to as the Series 2003 Bonds, which were originally issued in the aggregate principal amount of 42 million. To A, finance, refinance, and reimburse the payment of certain costs of acquiring, constructing, renovating, remodeling, and equipping certain of the borrowers' facilities located at 4100 Illinois Route 53 in Lisle, Illinois 60532, the prior 2003 project. B, to pay a portion of the interest on the Series 2003 bonds. C, provide working capital. And D, pay certain expenses incurred in connection with the authorization and issuance of the Series 2003 bonds. Double I, refund and redeem the county's outstanding revenue bond, the Morton Arboretum Project Series 2017, the Series 2017 bond, which was originally issued in the aggregate principal amount of $20 million. Two, A, refund and redeem a portion of the outstanding Series 2003 bonds. B, refinance, refinance, and reimburse the payment of certain costs of acquiring, constructing, renovating, remodeling, and equipping certain of the borrowers' facilities in Lisle, Illinois, at the address referred to above, including, but not limited to, a portion of South Farm Project expenditures, and all or a portion of the expenditures related to the Thornhill Annex and outpost replacement, the prior 2017 project. And C, pay certain expenses incurred in connection with the authorization issuance of the 2017 Series 2017 bond. Triple I, finance a swap termination payment. And number four, IV, pay certain expenses incurred in connection with the authorization and issuance of the bonds. The bonds will be issued by the county pursuant to the Industrial Building Revenue Bond Act 50ILCS 445, the county's code, 55ILCS 5 at Secutor, and the Local Government Debt Reform Act 30ILCS 350 at Secutor. As supplemented and amended collectively, the act, the prior 2003 project, and the prior 2017 project are within the territorial jurisdiction of the county. All the facilities to be refinanced with proceeds of the bonds are owned or operated by the borrower and are situated on the borrower's approximately 1,700-acre campus located in Lisle, Illinois, and having the street address of 4100 Illinois Route 53 in Lisle, Illinois 60532. The county is a political subdivision, a body corporate and body politic duly organized and validly existing under the laws of the state of Illinois, the state. The bonds will be issued by the county pursuant to the act. The bonds will be special, limited obligations of the county, the principal of, premium, if any, and interest on which will be payable solely from revenues and income derived from the repayment of the loan of the proceeds of the bonds to the borrower pursuant to the terms of the loan agreement by and between the county and the borrower. The bonds will not be a debt of the county, the state, or any political subdivision thereof within the meaning of any provision of the Constitution or statutes of the state, or a pledge of the faith and credit of the county, the state, or any political subdivision thereof, or grant to the owners thereof any right to have the county, the General Assembly of the state, or any political subdivision of the state levy any taxes or appropriate any funds for the payment of the principal thereof or the interest thereon, but will be special, limited obligations of the county payable solely out of the revenues and other funds pledged for their payment in accordance with the loan agreement, including any supplements thereto, and a trust indenture by and between the county and the U.S. Bank National Association as trustee pursuant to which the bonds are issued. Would anyone present like to submit written comments on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none? Would all residents, taxpayers, or other interested parties attending the hearing today and desiring an opportunity to express their views for or against the proposed bonds please stand so that they may have an opportunity to make those comments or statements? For the record, seeing none, hearing none. As Chairman of the DuPage County Board, I hereby conclude this public hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed $52 million in aggregate principal amount of the county's revenue refunding bond. I conclude this hearing of the Morton Arboretum Project Series 2020. Thank you very much. All that legalese, right? Madam Clerk, gotta do what you gotta do. So thank you very much for everybody understanding this is a great opportunity to work with, a really valuable neighbor and partner and civic leader, the Morton Arboretum. I mean, so I think we're doing a good deed here, and they're very grateful, and there's virtually no risk to our taxpayers, so it's all good. Moving right along, onto the order of Chairman's report, we have a presentation today. I would like to introduce that presentation. Karen Aiella is going to join us up here at the podium. Yesterday, Karen and I were with Governor Pritzker as he announced the emergency proclamations making the state of Illinois eligible for federal funding. As you know, our DuPage County Health Department, the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and our DuPage Care Center have been putting in many, many extra hours preparing for and responding to the ever-changing situation surrounding the coronavirus, or more accurately referred to as COVID-19. These county agencies have put in thousands of hours in preparation and response activities to ensure that we are able to minimize the impact of this respiratory virus on our residents. I've asked Karen to provide us a brief update today, and she and our Office of Emergency Management Director Marie Snow can then answer your questions. So Karen, please proceed.
Thank you. So before I begin the presentation, I'd first like to express my appreciation on behalf of the DuPage County Health Department staff standing behind me, both physically and virtually across the street, for the support from the county board office, specifically Joan Olson and Cheryl Marquet, county board chairman Cronin, and Board of Health President Sam Tornatori. I'd also like to extend both my appreciation for and assurance to this board and the residents of DuPage County, that the DuPage County Health Department, along with the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Director Snow and his team, are working seamlessly to assist us during this time. So with that, we have continued to update this presentation over the course of the weeks between when I last presented and today. In order, this slide, this particular slide was added because we need to balance our message to the public and to each other. Clearly, this novel virus is not as lethal as others that we have encountered. But at the other end of the spectrum, there is messaging that it presents absolutely no risk, and that the risk that it does present should be discounted. When I last was here, I talked about the remarkably quick spread of this virus. That is also compounded with the fact that because it is a novel virus, human beings have no immunity to this virus. There is currently no treatment or vaccine available for the virus. And again, we're really using data that we have acquired over time, not with this particular virus, but with other similar viruses. So when you are asked about why we're concerned, these are some of the talking points that we hope that you use. Summarizing, yes, we are concerned. However, we are confident in our ability to mitigate the risk and the spread based on our prior experiences and the lessons we're gaining as time goes by. One of those lessons learned, and one of those practices that we've previously experienced, is that the more prepared we are as elected officials, as community leaders, and as residents of this earth, the lower the negative and unintended impact on health, social, and economic disruption can be achieved. We can't tune this issue out. Instead, we need to use every opportunity that our public health, to express that our public health system is ready and capable to manage the inevitable spread within our communities. To that point, the DuPage County Health Department Crisis Management Team activated on January 21st. This was several days prior to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services National Public Health Emergency Declaration. And what that declaration provided is that the local public health department stands as the lead agency to monitor and investigate disease cases, to coordinate with our partners across the community, and to educate the community on how to protect themselves. Yesterday, as the chairman mentioned, he and I attended the governor's news conference to announce the state's decision to issue a state of emergency declaration. Illinois became actually the 14th state to make that formal announcement, and what that provides is an opportunity for us to be queued up in the list of states requesting resources, both physical and human, to help us further prepare. This next slide represents kind of a micro look into the process that we have been engaged upon and with over the last seven weeks. This process has played itself out hundreds of times in the last month and a half, but initially, we're contacted by doctors who diagnose a patient or have an individual present to their emergency room or their doctor's office with either a travel history or some other kind of unexplainable lower respiratory illness. Following that, we conduct interviews with the sick person and find out who they have been in contact with while contagious, and where that person has been. What we now have, the data that we now have, is that every case of COVID-19 has about 90 other individuals who they have had contact with. Now, that's an average. There are some who have much less, and there are others who have hundreds. Each of those individuals must be contacted directly, and provided instruction that sick people may need to stay home, and others will need to monitor themselves and report back to us. And finally, we continue to educate. We educate our healthcare providers, employers, schools, community members, elected officials, and the news media about diseases. Again, a reminder of the kind of hierarchy. We have close contacts. Those are individuals that are one of the 90 people that I just referenced that either had a travel history in the now, I think, six countries that have been listed on the watch list, or they've had direct contact with someone who is actually a case. That's the biggest, that's the base of our pyramid. Those people are, again, monitored on a daily basis, if not twice a day. If they develop symptoms, then they become a PUI, or a Person Under Investigation. Those are individuals, then, that we coordinate with their healthcare provider and/or emergency room so that they can be tested. Once tested, then they become either a confirmed case or a negative. This is a direct screen grab from the CDC's website. You'll see as of March 9th, yesterday, there was 423 on my way in this morning. I understand that now the count is closer to 700, and will continue to increase nationally. From a statewide perspective, the state reports on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday basis. You'll see, again, this was prior to yesterday's announcement of an additional four cases, but the total denominator for that Persons Under Investigation stands at 262. We now are moving into a different phase of our response to this novel coronavirus, which requires not only the continuation of everyday preventive actions, but NPIs, or non-pharmaceutical interventions, that can and have assisted us in spreading a virus that has reached a pandemic level. Those include things like making sure that people stay home when they're sick, increasing the space between people at school and work to be at least three feet, modifying, postponing, or canceling large events, or temporarily dismissing a workplace or asking people to work from home. As I mentioned, we're moving from the early stage of Phase 1, where we had very limited numbers of case identification, isolated cases, the link was clear to the outbreak area. We're now taking all of that work and expanding it to Phase 2, where we're providing broader community-wide education and preparation. That's as community spread begins. And we're getting ready for Phase 3, because everything that has happened, both around the world and within the United States, tells us that we will have the opportunity to expand our focus. I would like to remind you that of the 11 cases that have been identified in Illinois, only one has been identified as a community-acquired infection. The rest have a clear connection to either travel or exposure to a case. So what have we been doing at the DuPage County Health Department in the intervening weeks? You'll see that as of the tracking that we began doing of our staff time, we actually have nearly 1,800 staff hours that have been identified as dedicated to this response. What that represents from a financial standpoint is the investment of around $70,000, and this too continues to click up on a daily basis. The primary area that has been impacted is our communicable disease and epidemiology area. They provide and communicate daily with IDPH on testing guidance. They provide the phone screening. They track and monitor, and they field phone calls 24/7 from doctors' offices, schools, businesses, and the public regarding COVID-19. Other impacts to our agency include our leadership group, finance and procurement. Our call center has been stood up. Our facility staff, our IT and our health promotion staff are also in a heightened state of activity. In addition to all of these, I would like to point out that the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management have assisted us in coordinating large-scale logistics and preparation. Because as we move into Phase 2 and Phase 3, which I indicated earlier, together with the state's declaration yesterday, our role in local public health will need to expand to coordinating necessary PPE, personal protective equipment, masks, gloves, thermometers, et cetera, to high-risk, high-need areas and populations across the county. We have presented to all of these locations and provided outreach to each of those entities listed there. We have engaged in really trying to reach the broadest population possible through our stories, our media reach, our website, and our social media. We are launching weekly e-newsletters that will provide routine communication for partners. If you'd be interested in receiving those, please check first thing tomorrow for a link on our website that will be available to you. As the resources and the buzz on the internet expands, we want to anchor our residents and you with these three websites. It's our website, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and then CDC's. These are the most reliable, reputable, and science-based resources available to both you and residents. We have built out, excuse me, we've built out a robust resource page on our website. One of the items that I would like to draw your attention to is a presentation request form. So individuals, or businesses, or community groups who would like to have a presentation or an update on COVID-19 can simply fill out the form that comes back to our staff, and it allows us to expedite and manage those requests. You can also follow us on Facebook and Twitter. With that, thank you.
Okay, questions? Member Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. We've heard that the numbers might be artificially low because there aren't enough test kits or haven't been enough test kits. Are there, does DuPage County have ample test kits now for the county, for the doctors in the county, for the hospitals in the county?
Yes, we actually, we collect the specimens, and those specimens then are tested at a statewide lab, and we have had no challenges in getting tests run.
What is that turnaround, then?
It's actually greatly increased since the beginning, and now it's within 24 to 36 hours we're able to turn those around.
Okay. Second question is, you said that there's only 262 PUIs in Illinois. I'm wondering how those are identified, because we just heard a story yesterday of a traveler on, well, AntTrak actually released a statement. There was a traveler from Chicago to St. Louis, and there had to be hundreds of people on that train alone.
So one point of clarification, and that's a really good question. One point of clarification is that PUIs and other cases are tracked by their state and community of residents. So that particular individual is a resident of Missouri, so those numbers will be tracked through Missouri. And then we will be notified. It will not only be tracked, but that investigation will be managed by the state of Missouri, and then we will be brought in as needed.
And apparently that person walked around the Chicago station and the St. Louis station, who knows?
So it's really important to stay home if you're sick.
And my final question is, you said that there's no treatment, so what are they doing for the people infected?
They're doing supportive care, so if people are dehydrated, they're hydrating them. If people are having trouble with congestion, they're providing them with different levels of decongesting, and then just monitoring them and their symptoms.
Thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to say thank you for all of your work and all of your staff's work.
Thank you, thank you.
I know you guys are just probably working 24/7, and it's appreciated.
I have some remarkable team members, so absolutely.
Further questions? Member Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Karen, so we heard yesterday that the CDC advised people not to travel by cruise ship, and then if you're within the demographic that's more susceptible to the disease, not to take long plane rides. Are you aware of any guidance being given by state or local authorities regarding our own transportation networks, whether that be Metro? Member Desart mentioned the exposure to Union Station, that's kind of why I'm asking.
Yeah, we are basing both our local and our state guidance based on what CDC is providing, and there have been no other recommendations at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Member Selman?
Further questions, Member Selman?
Following up a member Desart's question about the testing, are we sure that everyone who suspects they may have this is getting tested? Because nationally, that's not what we're seeing. Nationally, we're seeing you have to have been in China where we have understood that this virus is highly communicable. And so if you were on that Amtrak train, could you call your doctor and say, "I think I'm exposed. I've got a cold. I want a test." Or is the CDC still very much limiting who gets these tests?
So that's kind of a tricky question, because even people who have absolutely no exposure, some people can convince themselves that they've been exposed, and so we don't want to test everybody who thinks that they may have COVID-19. So we want to have that evaluation that happens, but we want it to be science-based and medically informed, right? So if they call their doctors and the doctors agree that they have had some significant risk, then the process is that that doctor will reach out to our medical officer, Dr. Chug. They will have a conversation, a discussion about what is the level of risk, evaluate that, and I will assure you that if there is any level of risk, Dr. Chug will then authorize the testing to be done. So we don't feel that there has been any kind of barrier locally to the testing being done. Now, this week, private labs began being able to expand their testing. So we're not exactly sure how that's going to play out, but we are sure that it will have some sort of impact on our activities.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, Member Chaplin?
Thank you, Chairman. So the age groups that are mostly infected, I heard now it's like 60 and over. So 60 and over, you have a little more vulnerability.
Older group, 60 and older.
Right, so which are a lot of, you know, people in this room. And I know it's not as serious as other viruses, but to that age group, I believe it can be. So for, you know, just to tell people that are a little bit older, use extra precautions. And also, our nursing homes, you know, are we reaching out to them? I know some have restricted visiting and things like that to keep them safe, but even checking on your older neighbors or things like that might be a good idea to make sure that our older population is...
Go over to their house when they're infected, as you want to do?
Well, I mean, just call them, maybe call them, ask if they're feeling okay, or, you know, check in on them.
I agree, I agree.
Because the older population is a little more vulnerable.
Absolutely, absolutely. 80% of the cases, in fact, globally, have been people 60 and over, particularly for those of us who may be very close or at that point. It's 80 and over with underlying health concerns. Long-term care facilities have received additional guidance, and we've been working actually with Moy Care Center to provide them. Because the guidance is one thing, you know, they're supposed to test all their employees coming in. They're supposed to test visitors coming in, but if they don't have access to the resources to do that kind of testing, then they're not able to comply. And so we've been working with Janelle and her team to assure that those resources are in place.
Thank you.
Further questions, Member Julie Renahan?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Karen. Kind of going the other way, regarding kids in schools, we heard yesterday Wheaton was possibly going to shut down, and a school in Wilmette, I heard Vanderbilt and Berkeley have sent kids home for this, you know, for at least through April, maybe through the semester. Is the directive for DuPage County coming through your office or through the ROE, or, you know, how can we expect to hear?
So we are working very closely with the ROE. We have had multiple in-person meetings with superintendents and PIOs and other personnel from the school districts. We are offering to work hand-in-glove with the school districts for making those decisions. One of the important points that has been unveiled over the last couple days is of the 70,000 cases worldwide, only 2% are in children under the age of 19 years old. So again, I think when I was here last, we were starting to hear some of that information, and that has been confirmed up to this point. The challenge that schools have is that if people have been exposed through travel or through case contacts, we are encouraging those individuals to stay home, but their family members can continue on with their daily activities. And so there's been a lot of misinformation and rumors when we ask people to stay home because they may have been in close contact, that the community is interpreting that to be a case. And that's why we keep coming back to if there's close contacts and there's cases, and that close contacts are just being watched, so that if they become cases, we can literally jump on those and have a very quick kind of reaction.
Member Ozog, followed by Member DC Annie, followed by Member Larson.
Thank you so much for your, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for your work these past few weeks. I'm sure you're very, very busy. However, my question is, how confident are you that, based on your previous experience and dealings with the CDC, how confident are you that you're getting the information and the communication that you need and is truthful and legitimate?
So the people that we've been able to interact with at CDC have been, from a public health standpoint, rock stars in their fields. Certainly, Dr. Fauci from NIH is someone who's career has paralleled mine, and he is someone who I implicitly believe and trust. So I think that the information that we're getting and we're getting access to is rock solid. I, yes, I'll leave it at that.
Further questions, Mr. DC Annie?
Karen, I want to thank you for your help with the Care Center. I've been in touch with Janelle. She indicates to me that you're working closely with her to protect her vulnerable across the street, which are very, you know, challenged individuals.
Absolutely.
And I know protocols are being evaluated and things are kind of rolling out from the state and from the Chicago metro public health. My question is, on the testing kits, do those give an instant result, or do those have to go to a lab after the test? Or is the testing kit actually give a live result?
It is my belief, and Dr. Chug, if you would chime in, that all of the testing kits require some period of time for turnaround.
Testing, yes. Excuse me, correct. They are a PCR kind of test that is collected, the specimens are collected at the emergency department, and we coordinate the patient evaluation with our emergency department. And I want to thank our health care partners who have worked with us seamlessly. And then those are transported expeditiously to the Illinois Department of Public Health lab, and then tested either at the Chicago Springfield or Carbondale locations. And the turnaround time of the actual test is probably four to six hours. So it just depends on when the specimen arrives. If we can get the specimens to them by 11:00 a.m., we have a result by usually 4:00 that afternoon. If it doesn't arrive until the next morning, then we have the next afternoon. And they usually batch them when they test them.
So is that similar or different than the current flu test that we give? I know at the Care Center, we're giving a flu test. If somebody has symptoms, we'll give them to rule out the common flu types, and then if they still have symptoms and they don't fit any of our typical flu types, then they would then go to the next level of concern, I would assume.
Right. So the current testing for coronavirus, the novel coronavirus, is not the same as some of the rapid point-of-care tests that we have that are antigen tests that are done, you know, within minutes. Those are also less sensitive, so a positive can be helpful and help inform diagnosis and actions. A negative doesn't necessarily rule it out. So the flu PCR testing, which is, you know, sometimes sent out or takes a couple hours, that's a little bit more reliable, but does take a little bit extra time.
Got you.
If I could just quickly go back to one of the testing questions, Member Selman, that you had, and are we testing enough people? One of the points that was shared yesterday as we were downtown is the fact that until people are symptomatic, we're not convinced that the test will pick up a positive reaction in the test. And so if we test people without symptoms, there is a concern that we'll be getting negative results that are not reliable.
False negative. Further questions, Mr. Larson, followed by Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Member Desart. Trying to get to everybody else their first question before I can come back to multiple questioners. Please.
Chairman, just actually a couple thoughts on this, because obviously, I think it's important to take this extremely seriously and to address these issues, but I also want to address the other side of that, which is, you know, we're seeing a national reaction that's kind of bordering on panic that may be an overreaction. What people don't realize is there may be a lot of people who are already infected who will never develop a serious reaction to the disease. So we don't know what the true fatality rates are. We don't know exactly how the human population is going to react to this. I think we need to take sensible measures, but when I was in Costco over the weekend, I saw a bunch of people buying water. The water supply is not going to fail, okay? The water's still going to flow out of your taps and so forth. People can take sensible precautions and do so, but people should do so with their eyes open and be mindful not to panic, but to be sensible.
Absolutely. And that is, I think, the biggest challenge of our public health messaging is, yes, we want to be concerned. This is something that we haven't seen before. At the same time, it's not panic, throw your hands up time to go hoard supplies.
Member Elliott, followed by Member Desart.
I just had a question. We're in a, I guess, what I would call a state of high anxiety right now. I mean, there's closings, and every day, people are watching the tallyboards to see how many people have it. And I guess this is new to me and perhaps to most of us. Do we know what the arc looks like? I'm trying to look at what the world looks like two months from now, and four months from now, and six months from now. Does this dissipate? In past outbreaks of something like this, does it rise and then dissipate? Or is this just the new normal until the time that a vaccine arrives on the scene?
So that is the $64 million question. All outbreaks, all outbreaks have a start, a ride, a peak, and then it dissipates. Now, the period of time that that lasts, the number of peaks that we have as we go through that process, all of that is unknown to us. And so we are learning as we go. We certainly saw that, you know, a couple weeks ago, Italy had a small cluster, and now Italy is kind of closed for business. So we know that this does have a peak. We also know that China was widely, you know, widely had outbreaks, and now they seem to be on the downward slope. So every day, we're learning, and the degree of uncertainty, we are not used to not being able to predict things. We are very spoiled, I guess I would say, in being able to know what's coming next, what's coming next. I think the best advice I have for us is to expect that we will have cases, to expect that we will have spread of this disease in our community. We are working very closely with schools to not. Already, I've heard about schools closing, and based on what I hear on the news report, which of course is only part of it, it doesn't sound to me like it's a valid reason. I want to assure you that we will be working very closely with the ROE and our school personnel to make sure that we use the best guidance and science to make those kinds of really tough calls.
Good question. Member Desart.
I just had a quick question. Two weeks ago, when you spoke to us, you were very clear that there were no cases of COVID-19 in DuPage County. I didn't hear you say that this time.
There are no cases of COVID-19 in DuPage County.
Excellent, thank you.
As of 10:45 today.
Yeah, I don't expect that that will remain the case. Further questions, further questions? Karen, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay, moving along onto the order of Chairman's report, Chairman's remarks. Today, I announce that our Chief Financial and Administrative Officer, Paul Raefek, is leaving us for an opportunity to become Executive Vice President and CFO, Chief Financial Officer of the Chicago Botanic Garden. It's a dream job for him, and I'm going to miss him. I love Paul. He's been just an incredible help and influence and consummate professional. But I recognize, we recognize, that this is an incredible opportunity for Paul to take such an important role in an organization that is known worldwide as a Chicago treasure. So we're going to miss you, Paul, but we congratulate you and we wish you the very best. We also want to thank Paul for the tremendous growth and change he's administered in the finance office in shaping our award-winning budgeting and fiscal operation. You've been nothing short of a master. In addition to acting as our county CFO over the past year, as you know, Paul stepped up to assume additional responsibilities overseeing a number of county departments, as did Cheryl Marquet and Joan Olson, who have all done a wonderful job. Here is my plan that I share with you going forward, and this is in response to sentiments and concerns and ideas. We will post the position of Chief Financial Officer for DuPage County, of course. This is a critical function, and I feel strongly that we must conduct a thorough search, utilizing our partners at the Government Finance Officers Association, Illinois Government Finance Officers Association, international city and county administrators to assist us in finding the very best, most qualified candidates. Second, I announce the elevation of Nick Kotmeyer to join our executive team as Chief Administrative Officer of DuPage County. Nick will serve as the primary point of contact for board members with county operations. We will continue to navigate our way through this management structure, and we will, I have the utmost confidence that all of you will be well-served, as will the county and the taxpayers. So thank you very much. We move on to the order of business entitled "Public Comment." Public comment, there's a number of individuals seeking recognition. Again, we ask that the folks who are here to share their thoughts with us, while we welcome your thoughts, we ask that you observe our rules and try and be sure to keep your remarks limited to no more than three minutes. So with that, first and foremost, we have Norma Cabral here to talk about the DuPage County Fairgrounds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Norma Cabral. I work at the DuPage County Fairgrounds and have been there for 40 years. The Fairgrounds has been like a home for me. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous here. Just like it has been a home for so many members of this community that have had the opportunity to work with us or continue to hold their events on our grounds. We are a work staff of five full-time employees, one of me included, and three part-time weekend employees. Being that we are such a small crew, I have had the opportunity to gain experience in different work areas, which started with grounds maintenance, including pulling weeds, mowing grass, painting, snow removal, and even cleaning after the events. And then moved on into the office to work, which has consisted of being a receptionist, graphic designer, data entry, event coordinator, and office manager. Just as I began my work experience at the fairgrounds many years ago, we offer this opportunity to many high school and college students looking to work and make some money to cover their expenses, as well as gain some experience in different work aspects. During the summer, we have hired up to 30 seasonal employees that work in maintenance in the months leading up to the fair. During the fair, they work as parking ushers, ticket takers, ticket sellers, and upkeep of the grounds and buildings. Many of the events that are held at the fairgrounds are employment opportunities for members of the community as well. From the monthly train shows, antique shows, and every single event on the grounds, there are members from the surrounding towns that count on these jobs to help with their living expenses. I hope you, as a whole board, take into consideration those of us that have put all our effort into the upkeep and growth of the fairgrounds. We, the staff of the DuPage County Fairgrounds Association, thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Randy Bachman on the same subject matter.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the county board. My name is Randy Bachman, and I represent the Great Midwest Train Show, the monthly model train show that's been running 11 times a year at the DuPage model train show that's been running 11 times a year at the DuPage County Fairgrounds since 1972. The show is the largest monthly show of its kind in the world. Outside of the county fair, we are also the largest and longest-running event at the fairgrounds. We occupy all five buildings and attract an average of 180 exhibitors and about, give or take, 1,500 attendees each month. Participants travel from all parts of Illinois, all the states bordering Illinois and the states bordering those states. While here, they stay in area hotels and eat at local restaurants, which of course is positive economic activity for the local businesses. A show is also an important part of the lives of local residents, people who live, work, pay taxes, and vote in this community. When the show started in 1972, it was mainly a marketplace for existing model road enthusiasts, and the main attendee demographic was men 25, 54. Over time, we've evolved the show to include more displays and more things of a general public nature, and we've seen a much larger percentage of younger families with children. With kids under 12 being free and a coupon on our website where spouses can also get in free, an entire family can see the show for only $7. The DuPage County Fairgrounds is ideally situated and well-established in the western suburbs as the place for model roaders and hobbyists to gather every month. No other facility in Chicago has ever met our criteria for a show. We've had a very good relationship with the Fair Association and the fairgrounds going back almost 50 years, and we'd like to continue that for many more years in the future. I would just like to say thank you for your continued support of the DuPage County Fair Association and the fairgrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Sarah Michelle Bachman, who has filed a slip, record of appearance or attendance only, in support of the train show. We have Jerry Kerger here from NAMI DuPage to talk about the fairgrounds.
Good morning, Chairman Cronin, members of the board, and all civically-minded friends here today. My name is Jerry Kerger, and I'm executive director of NAMI DuPage. NAMI DuPage is a DuPage chapter of the National Alliance on Mental Illness. If you're not familiar with it, NAMI is a not-for-profit organization that provides trained, peer-led, mental health support, advocacy, and education free of charge or at very low cost. Last year, NAMI directly served more than 35,000 residents in DuPage County, helping not only people with mental illness, but their families. Some of our programs include a supportive employment program. As you can imagine, finding jobs is very difficult for people with mental illness. In the two and a half years that we've operated the program, we've found jobs for more than 80 program participants. We also have two social enterprises onsite, a print shop and a cafe. We have youth outreach programs to high schools, serving more than 18,000 DuPage students last year. Our programs are different because they also provide a peer presenter, so someone living successfully with mental illness speaks to the students and helps them not only eliminate stigma, but in fact, if they have mental illness or suspect a family member have it, we lead them to the resources to help them. We provide many programs to people in jail, to law enforcement. We have a pilot program with several police departments throughout the county, work extensively with Sheriff Medrick, and I was recently asked to be on the Illinois State Task Force, excuse me, to reduce suicide among first responders. We have many, many types of support group and education classes for family members. Because NAMI DuPage receives no state or federal ongoing funding, nearly all the money, nearly all of our work is done through private fundraising through local organizations and individuals and writing grants. The DuPage Fairground Association, another not-for-profit organization, has been a very important partner for NAMI. Many of our fundraisers are held at the fairgrounds. Two of the three fundraisers we have a year are held there. In addition to, well, we have a run there every year. We have a wine tasting event held there every year, and we also sell cookies at the DuPage County Fair, which raises several thousand dollars for our program. Year after year, Jim McGuire, the executive manager of the DuPage County Fair, has provided NAMI fairground space and personally been present well after business hours to monitor its use. This support is essential to our organization. I know that we are only one of many community groups that are reliant on this crucial resource to provide vital services to Page residents. One out of every five people in the United States, one of every five adults, will suffer from a mental health disorder every year. That's a lot of people in a county of almost a million. All of us at NAMI and all of you benefit from the support given to NAMI through the DuPage County Fair Association, and NAMI would like to praise them for their support. The board supports the Fair Association, and now it is time for NAMI to speak up and thank this board for supporting them. Thank you all.
Thank you. Andrea Ferrier on the issue of the fairgrounds. And, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Good morning. My name is Andrea Ferrier, and I work for the University of Illinois Extension in DuPage County as the 4-H program coordinator. As you may know, Extension is the community-based outreach arm of the University of Illinois in Urbana-Champaign. U of I programs are aimed at making life better, healthier, safer, and more profitable for individuals and their communities. Locally, we offer programs in horticulture, health and wellness, nutrition education, and last but not least, youth development. I believe that our youth development programs here help prepare children to be college, career, and most importantly, community-ready. Our 4-H program reaches over 7,000 youth annually. Our master gardeners reach almost 8,000 contacts, and we have almost 3,000 participants in our SNAP education program. Without connections and partnerships, which our organization values very much, our reach would be limited. With that said, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the county board for their continued support as our budget is minimal. Without partnerships like with the DuPage County Fair Board Association and fairgrounds, our educational programming would be stifled. The Fair Board Association provides space without rental fees, not only for our individual 4-H clubs to meet monthly, but for our larger events like the 4-H Fair Exhibits, Clover Kickoff, and International Night, which highlights our community cultural organizations with over 500 people in attendance. The Fair Board Association provides volunteer assistance for our many programs, too. And the fairgrounds itself is important cornerstone to the community for the various activities and events that are available on an annual basis, as you've heard before. I ask that you keep that impact in mind when the topic of discussion arises, and I thank you again for the continued support for the University of Illinois Extension and our programming and the DuPage County Fair Association.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the order of business entitled "Consent." And so, there's a motion and a second for items A through J. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozak.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Troy Torrey.
Aye.
18.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Mr. Chairman, I move on CBR 26820, the appointment of Dennis A. Moran to the zoning board of appeals.
It's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozak.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Troy Torrey.
Aye.
18.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Mr. Chairman, I move on CBR 26920, the appointment of Jennifer Fahey-Heller as the weed control superintendent.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. Fine report. On to the order of finance, member Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to combine the items A through D.
It's been a motion to combine and a second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then I move approval of the following items, which are all recommendations to renew the master contract agreement between the DuPage County Procurement Division as lead agency for omnia partners for various companies, with FIR 270-20 being with Space Saver Corporation, 271-20 with National Office Furniture, 272-20 with All Steel Inc., and 273-20 with Kimball Office Inc.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
It's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozak.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Troy Torrey.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozak.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Troy Torrey.
Aye.
18.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Mr. Chairman, I move on CBR 26920, the appointment of Jennifer Fahey-Heller as the weed control superintendent.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. Fine report. On to the order of finance, member Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to combine the items A through D.
It's been a motion to combine and a second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then I move approval of the following items, which are all recommendations to renew the master contract agreement between the DuPage County Procurement Division as lead agency for omnia partners for various companies, with FIR 270-20 being with Space Saver Corporation, 271-20 with National Office Furniture, 272-20 with All Steel Inc., and 273-20 with Kimball Office Inc.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
It's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozak.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Troy Torrey.
Aye.
18.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Mr. Chairman, I move on CBR 26920, the appointment of Jennifer Fahey-Heller as the weed control superintendent.
Leave is granted, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 27420, budget transfers for various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 27720, placing names on payroll.
Leave is granted, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 27520, additional appropriation for the county infrastructure fund in the amount of $465,000.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 27620, additional appropriation for the county infrastructure fund, accounting unit 1220 for $695,267.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 27920, additional appropriation for the conservation and recreation fund wetland mitigation, in the amount of $41,591.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of FIR 28020, additional appropriation for the circuit court clerk operations administration fund in the amount of $450,000.
Leave is granted, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then finally, I move approval of FIR 28120, resolution providing for the issuance of not to exceed $52 million in aggregate principal amount of its revenue refunding bonds for the Morton Arboretum project.
Yes, there's been a motion and a second. It's questions, Mr. Member Tim Elliott.
Yes, I wonder if someone could comment on the time sensitivity of this, whether this is, the first time this came before us was two weeks ago, I believe, at finance, if I remember correctly. If this does not get done today, what are the consequences, if any?
Mr. Jim Snyder, ladies and gentlemen.
Jim Snyder, bond counsel for the county on this issue. They're planning on mailing the POS, which is the offering document, today, and then closing within a month, pricing in the next couple of weeks. The idea is to take advantage of advantageous interest rates. So, that would be the, you know, never know where interest rates are going to go, but that's the thought. So, if it didn't happen today, and was two weeks from now or four weeks from now, they could still do it. They, like anyone else in the market, would just be taking a chance with the interest rates. They could stay level, they could go up, they could go down, which is always the case, right? Yeah, I'm not aware of a legal impediment or a legal requirement to do it in the next, you know, by any certain date.
Okay, further questions? Anyone else have a question on this matter? Okay, there's been a, Mr. Elliott, please.
Yeah, not a question, this is really just my statement on this. I want to start by saying I think the Morton Arboretum, as you said in your comments, is a fantastic institution for DuPage County. When we were before the finance committee, it was described as one of our crown jewels, and I happen to agree with that assessment of the Morton Arboretum. This is an interesting act that we're taking. I'm not aware of us doing this with any other bodies in DuPage County. And while the county board as a whole may support taking this action with respect to the Morton Arboretum, I, representing District 4, cannot support this action today, and I'd like to explain why. The southern tip of District 4 is the Valley View subdivision, several hundred houses. Many of us on this board might be familiar with the Valley View subdivision. They've been before us many times because of chronic flooding issues that they've got down there. Route 53 is flooded on a regular basis, resulting in it being closed, resulting in traffic issues, delays, and economic consequences, not only for the people in Valley View, but for people in the general area. In addition, over the years, DuPage County and other public entities have acquired properties in the Valley View subdivision because we just don't have an answer to their flooding issues. The good news is, an answer might be on the horizon. As I mentioned last time when we had this before us in the finance committee, the Army Corps of Engineers is currently in the planning phases of a project that is examining detaining water, and I hope I'm using the right stormwater term here, detaining water in a subsidiary of the DuPage River called Lacy Creek. The Lacy Creek project has the prospect of great benefits for the Valley View subdivision, which would also mean great benefits for DuPage County and reduced expenditures associated with that subdivision. The Lacy Creek project may also have benefits downstream. As many of us know, the Army Corps of Engineers is currently looking at running levees along in Liah, which I think is in District 2, not sure about that, but the Lacy Creek project would increase the efficiency of that as well. The Lacy Creek project is still in the planning phases. There are no final plans yet, but it does appear to be certain that the Lacy Creek project will not be able to proceed without the Morton Arboretum's cooperation. There will be some impact on some portion of the Morton Arboretum as it is currently constituted. Unfortunately, the Morton Arboretum's initial letter to the Army Corps of Engineers on this subject was not very reassuring. While non-committal, the letter certainly conveyed the impression that the Morton Arboretum may not wholeheartedly be endorsing this Lacy Creek proposal.
Arboretum is the steward of its assets, and we have no desire to impair or hurt the Morton Arboretum's assets, and we'll work with them, obviously, and I don't think the people in Valley View want to hurt their assets, and we'll work with them, but what I was really hoping for was some assurance from them that they're going to go forward with the project, and that they will be at the table, and they'll roll up their sleeves in good faith and be part of this, I didn't get that, that's not the letter we got, the letter we got was, quite candidly, the kind of letter that I, as an attorney, have written or received many times, which is someone not taking a position, and essentially saying we're not taking a position, and I think we have a right to demand more of that from them before we take this action.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Oh, sure, would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Carol Ann Parker, and I'm the Controller for the Morton Arboretum, my Vice President is not here today because he's at a board meeting discussing this bond, and getting the resolution for the bond to pass, we did, he did tell me about the discussion he had with you at the Finance, after the Finance Committee meeting, about the project, and we are committed to being reasonable about this project, we don't want to, we want to work with our neighbors, but again, we want to not deteriorate our collections, so if we're not sure what the Army Corps of Engineers can do right now, we can't really give a committed response, other than that we're committed to be reasonable, and we did discuss that.
Commitment.
I'm sorry, I did not see the letter.
Yeah, according to Mr., so, look, I think we're on the same page here, no one would expect you to engage in negotiations against your best interest, but to the extent that you can be a part of a solution that does not threaten the burrows, or any other asset, this Valley View issue has been an issue for how many years, Mary, I mean, 50 years, as long as I've known, they've had problems down there flooding, so, I mean, if this can help them, our neighbors, I mean, let's at least, I mean, that's my sentiment, forgive me, please, and it's up to you, further discussion, Mr. Eckoff.
I'd like the two weeks to ferret that out.
Yeah, further discussion, Mr. Healy.
So you're just looking for them to send you a new letter that says, we will negotiate in good faith?
No, I think it'd be nice if we, me, Tim and I, and Mary, if she wants to go with us, the District Four reps, have a sit-down in the next couple of weeks, that's what I'd like.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to delay this matter for two weeks, and so we've had some discussion, thank you very much for input from the Morton Arboretum, there's a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Just to clarify, this is to continue for two weeks.
To put this matter on the agenda at our next board meeting.
No.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Chaplin, I mean, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Fifteen voting aye, three voting nay, this item will be continued for two weeks. In the interim, we hope that our sentiments and good intentions are conveyed to the good folks at Morton Arboretum, and thank you very much.
Fourteen aye.
If District Two reps, if there is going to be a meeting, they can be invited. Do that be great, I know District Four was concerned about it, but.
Sure, everybody's invited.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, forgive me, fourteen aye, one abstain, and three voting no, forgive me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
All the representatives from District Two and District Four will be invited if there is a meeting.
Everybody's invited.
Well, we have meetings that are open week.
Okay, assuming that you comply with Open Meetings Acts, and.
Not a violation.
Yeah, you can't have six, so, have a series of smaller meetings, it's your district, whatever you want to do, I'm sure the Morton Arboretum would be happy to meet with you.
May I request that everyone be, at least the District Two and District Four representatives be copied on any correspondence between the Arboretum and the county.
Okay, that's fine, where would that correspondence be going to, Mr. Rafek?
I will, I will meet here.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kotmeyer, here's your first assignment, thank you, okay, thank you, further discussion, well, that kind of resolves that matter, we'll move on to the next order of business, and that is, where are we, Animal Services, Mr. Brian Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a brief committee update, a week ago Sunday, Member Desart and myself attended our Volunteer Appreciation Day for all the volunteers who volunteer at Animal Services, it was very well-attended, staff did a good job of putting on a presentation on all the work that had been done through the year by the volunteers, and gave out the awards for the volunteers and the hours that they had spent, total last year was 14,621 volunteer hours, and based on calculations, that was equivalent to 371,812 dollars of service for the volunteers, our volunteer hours were up 300 hours from the year before, and that doesn't count the foster hours, we have several people who foster our animals at the animal facility, and those were not included in there, so, big thank you to all the volunteers who helped in DuPage, to help our animal services, and I have one item for a, today, and that's, we have our new animal service, or control officer, who needs to get certified, so we have an authorization for an overnight travel, motion for.
There's a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Chaplin, I mean, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Fifteen voting aye, three voting nay, this item will be continued for two weeks. In the interim, we hope that our sentiments and good intentions are conveyed to the good folks at Morton Arboretum, and thank you very much.
Fourteen aye.
If District Two reps, if there is going to be a meeting, they can be invited. Do that be great, I know District Four was concerned about it, but.
Sure, everybody's invited.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, forgive me, fourteen aye, one abstain, and three voting no, forgive me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
All the representatives from District Two and District Four will be invited if there is a meeting.
Everybody's invited.
Well, we have meetings that are open week.
Okay, assuming that you comply with Open Meetings Acts, and.
Not a violation.
Yeah, you can't have six, so, have a series of smaller meetings, it's your district, whatever you want to do, I'm sure the Morton Arboretum would be happy to meet with you.
May I request that everyone be, at least the District Two and District Four representatives be copied on any correspondence between the Arboretum and the county.
Okay, that's fine, where would that correspondence be going to, Mr. Rafek?
I will, I will meet here.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kotmeyer, here's your first assignment, thank you, okay, thank you, further discussion, well, that kind of resolves that matter, we'll move on to the next order of business, and that is, where are we, Animal Services, Mr. Brian Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a brief committee update, a week ago Sunday, Member Desart and myself attended our Volunteer Appreciation Day for all the volunteers who volunteer at Animal Services, it was very well-attended, staff did a good job of putting on a presentation on all the work that had been done through the year by the volunteers, and gave out the awards for the volunteers and the hours that they had spent, total last year was 14,621 volunteer hours, and based on calculations, that was equivalent to 371,812 dollars of service for the volunteers, our volunteer hours were up 300 hours from the year before, and that doesn't count the foster hours, we have several people who foster our animals at the animal facility, and those were not included in there, so, big thank you to all the volunteers who helped in DuPage, to help our animal services, and I have one item for a, today, and that's, we have our new animal service, or control officer, who needs to get certified, so we have an authorization for an overnight travel, motion for.
There's a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Chaplin, I mean, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Fifteen voting aye, three voting nay, this item will be continued for two weeks. In the interim, we hope that our sentiments and good intentions are conveyed to the good folks at Morton Arboretum, and thank you very much.
Fourteen aye.
If District Two reps, if there is going to be a meeting, they can be invited. Do that be great, I know District Four was concerned about it, but.
Sure, everybody's invited.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Oh, forgive me, fourteen aye, one abstain, and three voting no, forgive me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
But to the extent that you can be a part of a solution that does not threaten the burrows or any other asset, this Valley View issue has been an issue for how many years, Mary? I mean, 50 years. As long as I've known, they've had problems down there flooding. So, I mean, if this can help them, our neighbors, I mean, let's at least, I mean, that's my sentiment. Forgive me, please. And it's up to you. Further discussion, Mr. Ekoff.
I'd like the two weeks to ferret that out.
Yeah. Further discussion, Mr. Healy.
So you're just looking for them to send you a new letter that says, "We will negotiate in good faith."
No, I think it'd be nice if we, Tim and I and Mary, if she wants to go with us, this District Four reps have a sit-down in the next couple of weeks. That's what I'd like.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor to delay this matter for two weeks. And so, we've had some discussion. Thank you very much for input from the Morton Arboretum. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Larson.
Steve.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Just to clarify, this is to continue for two weeks.
To put this matter on the agenda at our next board meeting.
No. Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Chaplin, I mean, Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Fifteen voting aye, three voting nay. This item will be continued for two weeks. In the interim, we hope that our sentiments and good intentions are conveyed to the good folks at Morton Arboretum. And thank you very much.
Do that be great. I know District Four was concerned about it, but...
Sure. Everybody's invited.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, forgive me. Fourteen aye, one abstain, and three voting no. Forgive me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
All the representatives from District Two and District Four will be invited if there is a meeting.
Everybody's invited.
Well, we have meetings here every week.
Okay. Assuming that you comply with Open Meetings Acts and...
Not to the majority of the four.
Yeah, you can't have six. So, have a series of smaller meetings. It's your district, whatever you want to do. I'm sure the Morton Arboretum would be happy to meet with you.
May I request that everyone be, at least the District Two and District Four representatives be copied on any correspondence between the Arboretum and the county.
Okay, that's fine. Where would that correspondence be going to? Mr. Rafek?
I will not meet here.
Okay.
Mr. Kotmeyer.
Mr. Kotmeyer, here's your first assignment. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Well, that kind of resolves that matter. We'll move on to the next order of business, and that is, where are we? Animal Services. Mr. Brian Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief committee update. A week ago Sunday, Member Desart and myself attended our volunteer appreciation day for all the volunteers who volunteer at Animal Services. It was very well-attended. Staff did a good job of putting on a presentation on all the work that had been done through the year by the volunteers and gave out the awards for the volunteers and the hours that they had spent. Total last year was 14,621 volunteer hours, and based on calculations, that was equivalent to $371,812 of service for the volunteers. Our volunteer hours were up $300 from the year before, and that doesn't count the foster hours. We have several people who foster our animals at the animal facility, and those were not included in there. So, big thank you to all the volunteers who helped and DuPage to help our Animal Services. And I have one item for today, and that's we have our new Animal Service Control Officer who needs to get certified, so we have an authorization for an overnight travel. Motion for.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Kuduski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fine report. On to the Order of Economic Development. Member Tim Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's only one item on the agenda for economic development today, and I move approval of EDR 267-20, a resolution for DuPage Convention and Visitors' Bureau to be designated as a representative for grant purposes in DuPage County.
But a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Elliott.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Questions. Member Chaplin.
So, you know, I know we give $50,000 every year, and that matches the state, and that allows them to get their grant. But, you know, it's troubling to me that we give them the $50,000 a year. And I know that they have paid memberships that also pay into that, but the county's also giving them money. But not all events are represented in that Do More DuPage book. And I think if we're giving county tax dollars to that program, then I think they have responsibility to put all activities in that book and maybe not just the paid membership. You know, I'm not a huge fan, I mean, I've had issues with this group, the Visitors Visitor Bureau, since I got on the board. I'm going to vote to support it today, but I would like to see a little more inclusiveness in that, in their organization to include all of DuPage in their advertising.
Doesn't sound like a problem to me. Mr. Elliott?
Just ready to vote.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Member Elliott. On to the Order of Environmental. Member Liz Chaplin.
Yes, thank you. So I just have a brief committee update. We heard a lot of talk about the fairgrounds this morning, and I'm happy to announce that the County Environmental Committee approved that we're going to do the garden boxes again at this year's fair because, you know, gardening is very important, and we want to encourage it. You know, I was just thinking about during World War I and World War II, they had the victory gardens for the, that they did in America to support here so that they could send the food to the troops. You know, we have this coronavirus right now, right? And promoting local gardening, I think, is really important to be sustainable here. So, I'm really pleased that, thank the committee for that. We're also going to be working with the Sheriff's Department on the whole garden that they're moving from, I believe, North Avenue over to the jail. And the Environmental Committee also approved that, you know, we have staff help them with that.
It's good therapy.
We're going to be moving some water ma... It is. It's going to be great.
The hands and the dirt.
It is. It's going to be really a nice addition to the jail over there. I'm glad that we can be a part of that. This year is the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and it's also the 50th anniversary of the US EPA and the Illinois EPA. So those are kind of big anniversary dates.
Nixon created the US EPA, didn't he?
What was it?
Nixon.
Nixon, yes. And it was a great thing. And the Environmental Division is going to be providing information regarding climate, climate actions that they can, that residents can take, recyclable information, and information about sustainability on our Cool DuPage site. So residents can look to that to get ideas up to celebrating Earth Day. And then I'm really excited about our tremendous fair that we're going to have April 24. And this year, we're doing it on the county grounds, and we're going to be doing it outside so residents and staff can come and get a treat and then plant it in their yard. So, that's our brief committee update.
Very nice.
Yeah, yeah. With our, so with that, I will move on.
What kind of trees?
Um, I'm not sure what kind of trees are we having. Is anybody here that knows the kind of trees?
Native.
Native. Native trees, so.
There you go.
Yeah. So that's going to be, I think we're going to have about, what, between about 300, 400? Yes, we'll have between 3 and 400 that people can take. So, yes.
You're working with the Morton Arboretum on that?
Well, we, well, maybe not anymore. So, yeah, so, but with that, I would like to move on to ENR 002620, make a motion for a secondary host community benefit agreement between DuPage County and Lake Shore Recycling Systems for a solid waste transfer facility. And just to talk about this a little bit, what this agreement does here today, it's not an agreement that we're supporting it or anything. All this agreement is doing is allowing DuPage County to collect host fees for the transfer station. But besides the benefit of getting the host fees, if this is approved by West Chicago, we could possibly have, they would offer recycling options for residents. So you can go drop off your electronics, you could drop off any other kind of recycling items. At the site, they're going to apply to the Illinois EPA to be a hazardous, household hazardous waste collection site, which, you know, we really wanted to get one in that section of the county. So that would be another great benefit. And there would be an increase of construction and demolition recycling done there. So, you know, the fees that we can get range from like the first year to about $50,000 and maybe within five years up to maybe $160,000 in fees. So...
Yeah, that's great. No.
It's a nice benefit for the county.
I agree with you. Thank you, Member Chaplin. Anything further? We have Mr. Larson seeking recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to be supporting this proposal, but I do want to express on behalf of the community in District Six and West Chicago, concerns that we have. There is an existing transfer station there now, within a few hundred yards of the facility that's being built. We don't want to ever project the notion that West Chicago and our area is a dumping ground for the rest of the county. We've been assured, and we've spoken with the representatives of Lake Shore, and I appreciate their commitment. We had a lengthy discussion at the Environmental Committee meeting about a commitment to, one, making sure Powell's Road, where many of these trucks are going to be coming and going, will be properly maintained. And we will hope and expect that there will be environmental standards maintained such that while this is a benefit to the county at large and perhaps generates business and jobs in the area, that it doesn't have an adverse impact to the people of West Chicago. That is of importance to us, and so we will be monitoring it, but we do appreciate Lake Shore being forthright and expressing their desire to cooperate with us and work to make sure that those impacts are reduced or eliminated.
Yes, those, I appreciate those remarks, and they're measured. And so everything I know about Lake Shore Recycling is that my expectation is they're going to be good neighbors, and they're going to work with us, and they're going to do the right thing. But, yes, we'll be watching, and I welcome them, and I appreciate the comments from the two previous speakers. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I owe my seatmate, you know, over about 20 years ago, we cited the first transfer station in DuPage County, half a mile from this station. And we went through a lot with it. And again, we're not saying that the county is supporting this. We're saying if it comes, we're going to get a fee. And, you know, I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, when we were first sold from Groot, when they were on this facility, that we'd be getting all this waste there at the West Chicago facility. Hard to believe, we only get about 25% of our waste in DuPage County. Most of it gets sent to Cook County around the border here, which is alarming. And I know Groot's upset about this, but I would be upset that they didn't do more to bring more of the tipping fees in and bring more business into it. So, not happy that another one's coming right down the street. Obviously, it's more truck traffic for our district. But again, we're not the citing authority on this one. West Chicago is. And if West Chicago and the state of Illinois deem that this facility should be cited there, that's great. But it's good that the county got in. We do need to have those tipping fees. I know your environmental staff does a great job out there monitoring it all the time. And hopefully, you know, this is a wake-up call to Groot and other ones to, you know, maybe work within the industry to get, you know, some of these tipping fees back into DuPage and not send it around to Cook and Maywood and Eltrove and all the other spots. So, it's a necessity. Lake Shore, met with them. Seems like a great company. But it is concerning when you have two ways transfer stations, possibly two ways transfer stations, and they're both in West Chicago, half a mile from each other. That is concerning that there's nothing on north, south, east, or, you know, other portions of the county. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And also, I just did want to make two comments, because I believe the trucking traffic, we talked about that in Environmental Committee. I know I have representatives from Lake Shore here, but the trucks are there already, and they're, so there is not really going to be any increase in trucking traffic, if that's what I understand. Is that correct? Right? Because you guys have the trucks on the facility already. They're coming and going all day. So it wasn't going to really increase the amount of trucks on that road. Is that what I understood from our meeting?
Should I approach my...
Yeah, sure. You can come up here.
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is John Hock. I work for Civil and Environmental Consultants, and I'm here representing Lake Shore Recycling. So to answer your question, so the trucks that she's speaking of park there at the beginning and the end of the day right now, meaning that's where Lake Shore runs their hauling operation out of, to pick up waste in the suburban communities. So, from that, from that context, those will not be increasing. With, there will be some amount of increase, and that'll be discussed in detail when we go through the whole process with West Chicago. And we'll be talking about the ways that we will be minimizing the impact on any existing traffic flows to that area.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And then...
Yes, sure. Mr. Larson.
And while I understand the trucks will be parked there at the beginning and the end of the day, there will be additional transit by those trucks as business is brought in, and there will be transit with heavily loaded trucks on the roadways, correct? They'll be carrying large volume of material on and off the premises as it's being processed at the transfer station. You are correct. There will be some amount of additional truck traffic.
Heavy trucks.
Fully loaded trucks, correct? Yes. And so that's, that's the area. Again, I support what we're doing here, but we do want to be mindful of the fact that this is going to have an impact in the sort of traffic that's going to be transiting that area. And we appreciate the commitment of Lake Shore in making sure those concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Okay.
And also, Lake Shore did offer anybody that would want to go tour the facility, you know, just contact Lake Shore, and they would open the facility for tour. And I toured, and it was great. And I went with Member Rutledge, and it was really a very educational experience, learning about what you do out there.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hock. Okay. Any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Member Elliott. On to the Order of Environmental. Member Jim Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval on ETSR 278-20, first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Pleasant View Fire Protection District and the County of DuPage, Illinois, on behalf of the Emergency Telephone System Board for the DuPage Emergency Dispatch Interoperable Radio System.
Very nice. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Thank you, buddy.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Fourteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Member Chaplin. A fine report. Thank you. On the Order of ETSB, we have Sean Noonan, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval on ETSR 278-20, first amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the Pleasant View Fire Protection District and the County of DuPage, Illinois, on behalf of the Emergency Telephone System Board for the DuPage Emergency Dispatch Interoperable Radio System.
Very nice. There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Thank you, buddy.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Elliott. the adoption of a permanent fly quiet program, what restoration of funding for our community development program and FEMA mapping program, initiatives to protect the environmental health of our citizens, support for the opioid crisis, and support for our county's capital program. In addition, we have recently added an agenda, given COVID-19 and the coronavirus epidemic, for additional federal priorities to ask Congress to recognize the role of our county health departments and reimburse and continue to support their roles, not just at the state level but locally as well. To those of you who were at NACO in Washington, thank you for being there, meeting with our representatives, and pursuing our agendas. And presumably, your meetings went well. I would move approval of LEGR 709-20. This is a resolution adopting the county's 2020 federal legislative agenda.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Desart.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Tornatore. On to the order of public works, Member Jim Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of recommendation for approval of contract with Alpha Laval, Inc., for reconstruction of two bio-solid belt presses for the Quidditch facility.
And a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Member Healy. On to the order of stormwater, Member Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMR 26220, intergovernmental agreement between the county of DuPage and the village of Westmont for drainage and maintenance in Liberty Park neighborhood.
Let the record reflect that Member Tim Elliott has left the room. There's been a motion and a second on this stormwater item, SMR 0262-20. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Seventeen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Jim Zay. On to the order of technology, Member Greg Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on item ATP 70-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Canon Solutions America, Inc.
And a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 71-20, recommendation for the approval of a contract to CDW Government, Inc.
Well, the second one...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do we have to do another roll call? Okay. Why don't we do a roll call? Yes. Yeah, so, request for leave, leave is granted. Oh, okay, all right. I was searching for that. So, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
No.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Fourteen.
Fourteen voting aye, four voting nay. The resolution is adopted. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 72-20, recommendation for the approval of contract to AT&amp;T for telecommunication services.
And a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
No.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
No.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
No.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Fourteen, four.
Fourteen voting aye, four voting nay. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 73-20, for a contract issued to CDW Government for the purchase of two Palo Alto firewalls to support higher bandwidth and annual support and subscriptions to Palo Alto firewalls for DuPage County Network.
Leave is granted. Mr. Hart? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last but not least, I move on item E, which is an authorization to travel for an IT staff member to attend a large city-county CIO summit in Austin, Texas.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Eighteen.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Fine report. On to the order of transportation. Mr. Don Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to combine agenda items A, B, and C, which are all awarding resolutions and were low bids. Well, you're going to step up, you know, okay. Show Mr. Elliott leaving your room?
Yes. Yes. So, there's a motion and a second to combine items A, B, and C. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. Please proceed.
Move to approve DTR 263-20, an awarding resolution to SKC Construction, Inc., for the 2020 pavement preservation crack ceiling program, which is low bid. Move to approve DTR 264-20, awarding resolution to K5 Construction Corporation for the 2020 pavement north program, low bid, and DTR 265-20, awarding resolution to K5 Corporation for the 2020 pavement south program, again, low bid.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Seventeen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Elliott has returned to the room. Mr. Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to combine D through H, which are all awarding contracts.
And a motion and a second to combine items D through H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTP 64, approval of a contract to WorldCo, Inc., for automotive lubricants. Move to approve DTP 6520, contracted Decker Supply Company, Inc., for signposts. Move to approve DTP 6620, a contract to Althoffer Industries for caterpillar repair and replacement parts. Move to approve DTP 6720, contract to ESI Consultants, Limited, for engineering services of 2020 Maintenance North Program. And move to approve DTP 6820, a contract to Premier Engineers for professional engineering services for the 2020 Pavement South Program.
There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DCani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Elliott.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Noonan.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I move to combine agenda items I through M, which are all amendments to resolutions.
And a motion and a second to combine items I through M. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, the ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTP 8A-20, amendment to a resolution issued to Rush Truck Centers of Illinois for a, for four tandem axle six-wheelers for the Division of Transportation. Move to approve DTP 94A, amendment to a resolution issued to Rush Truck Centers of America for the purchase of four tandem axle six-wheelers with snow and ice equipment. Move to approve DTR 178-8-19, amendment to a resolution issued to Benchmark Construction Company for Drainage Improvements. Move to approve DTR 286A-19 to Builders Paving for street paving and patch on the section of the road. And finally, move to approve DTR 164A-8-19 issued to Schroder Asphalt Services for Downers Grove Township.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Pachowski. A fine report. On to the order now that committees have concluded. Are you seeking recognition on the order of old business? Yes, she is. So, Sadia Covert, Member Covert.
Just wanted to give an update for everybody on our NACO conference, legislative conference that we attended. I was pleased to see Member Rutledge and Member Renahan and Member Eckoff and Member Hart and everybody who... Noonan. Sorry.
Ozog.
Ozog, exactly. Thank you. It was, it was a very educational and informative conference, and I value knowledge and education. And there were a variety of different seminars that we attended, and we were connected with other county commissioners and board members to brainstorm ideas of how we could make our county even better and enhance our county. There was a, my favorite committee was the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I know that sounds really boring, but it was fascinating for me. And we recently just received a, we entered, well, I think we finalized, kind of finalized negotiations with the City of Aurora on the Route 59 corridor project and the school district. And the City of Aurora has come to some sort of a resolution, and it's in the works regarding the TIFs in my district. So, I wanted to better understand that and be a part of that process as well. So, in addition to the variety of different seminars that we had, there was something really interesting I came across. It's a high-performance leadership training. It's a 12-week online program that actually enhances our leadership skills. And it's available for county board members, for director of different departments, and even staff. So, I think taking advantage of this high-performance leadership training would be really nice. They have a variety of different courses, and I can send over the information so everybody could...
Sure. You can distribute it.
Yes, yes. And also, Colin Powell sits on the board of this training group, and they were actually handing out free books, his books.
Thanks.
It's signed, exactly. And I forgot to bring it today.
He's got a few stories to tell, right?
No, sorry. They only gave me one.
You didn't bring one for everyone in the class?
No, I didn't. And then, I also, Member Rutledge and I separately, we had an opportunity to meet with our federal lobbyist, Bill Vining.
Oh, good.
And that was a great meeting I had. I thought he was wonderful. And it's just so important, the work that he's doing there for us, for the county, on our legislative priorities at the federal level. I thought that was really valuable and very, very valuable. And, and we need him there. And he's very experienced and very knowledgeable and very good. So, I'm glad that we have somebody on our side, our voice at the federal level. And I appreciate that because I can't be there every day, and none of us can, to, to make sure that we are progressing forward. So, anyway, that's all I have on NACO. I thought it was a very valuable experience, and I want to thank Member Healy for inviting us all to go out to NACO. Thank you. It is very, it is kind of long, but it was very valuable. So, thank you.
Great, yeah. Great remarks. Member Rutledge, Sheila Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman, and thanks, everybody. Sadia stole a good portion of my thunder there.
Oh, say it again.
But I do want to thank the staff. I had the opportunity of also meeting with Bill Vining, and we spent Tuesday afternoon, he shook me around at all of our representatives' offices. So, I was able to give our legislative agenda to Mr. Krista Morthe, Mr. Caston, and Mr. Foster. And I thank you for the staff for preparing all of that. So, I sounded like I knew what I was talking about with most of those people.
Fabulous.
And it was good to have Bill Vining in the room because equally, you know, helped when I just went, uh, uh, uh. So, it was good to have him there, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to go. Thank you to Member Healy for encouraging our participation in that. I have long been an advocate of, I built my photography business on conventions and where I could go to learn from others. And so, I think that's the most valuable thing. And I would also urge people to take the most advantage of that trip that you can. I wish that I would have had a few others with me on Tuesday afternoon. So, that's the end of my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Wonderful remarks. Mr. Healy.
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, doesn't have a coronary. The two things that's mosted out to me is we had a luncheon this time for the Illinois State Association of Counties, and the room was packed, which was great to see everybody, everybody there together, pushing the state association. And it's really great when, when you see that slowly start coming together. And, Mr. Chairman, you've been involved in this from the first day that we started talking about it at the C-Mat meetings with the Cook and the Coller Counties next year. President Proctor hopes you can join us at the conference.
Never go to a NACO event. But I'm glad that all of you go, and then you help enrich the process.
I'd also like to thank the, the board members for coming because that's great. It allowed me a little bit more time to spend on transportation issues, knowing that Sadie was going to one place, and Sheila was going to another, and Hart was going to another. I didn't have to try and cover some of those that I thought were important for the county to learn more about. What was important, in my opinion, was to spend more time on transportation. NACO took up an emergency motion that I had put forward that shows that the counties will be working with the railroads for the first time in our history, looking to get a bill presented to Congress that would look for $5 billion a year for five years for grade separations, which I know our county could really use several of those, along with the Cook County and all the rest of them in this area, which would be an added thing to the create project that was there. It passed unanimously, it then passed, because it first has to be a supermajority to get on the agenda, and we were able to do that. And then afterwards, while other people were taking care of other committees, I was able to meet with the railroads and again, start getting them, you know, moving forward on this and starting to look at our lobbying effort on this issue itself. And again, Bill Vining was great because he was there. He was able to give a perspective from that, along with Cook County's lobbyists. And finally, I just really enjoyed seeing the number of county officials there from our county and seeing them interact with other county officials throughout the state. And I hope that engenders a greater relationship between DuPage County and the other counties throughout the state. I know that immediately after our luncheon, Carroll County came to me and told me that they had an issue with the railroads. It happened to be the BNSF. And they explained it to me, and then I happened to be meeting with the BNSF about an hour and a half later, where we talked about that. And within two days, Carroll County's issue was resolved by the BNSF. So, it shows how the intergovernmental relationship between ISACO, NACO, and all of us is very important to not only DuPage County, but also all the counties in the state. So, I want to thank everybody for going. Hope you all continue to go.
Very nice, Mr. Healy. Member Chaplin.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. So, just a couple of things. First of all, finance ran long this morning. We had a very long and good meeting. But that runs into problems with our other committee meetings. And, you know, I asked when we were all elected in 2018 that we start talking about consolidating or looking at our committees so that we're not rushing through meetings. You know, last week, when some members were gone at NACO, some of the meetings were canceled. And I had an hour to conduct environmental, and it was a great meeting because, like Member Larson mentioned, we had a long, nice discussion on the Lakeshore recycling facility. And sometimes we don't have that with our meetings being so jammed, packed. So, I would really like some kind of a commitment from somebody here if we're going to have a meeting on this, and if it's a committee of the whole, maybe an hour after a board meeting, to talk about how we're going to address the committees going forward. Secondly, regarding the railroads, the Federal Railroad Association is having a conference in May, May 5th and 6th, all on grade separation. So, I'll be attending the meeting, and I think some staff members may be attending the meeting as well. And members from the DuPage and Road Safety Council will be in attendance at that great conference because grade separation is such an important issue. You know, the Railroad Safety Council has been working on it for a long time. And then lastly, I did want to mention that the Health Department, along with SCAERS, and our Environmental Division held a children's health summit a couple of weeks ago, which was very, it's a very educational summit. It really focused around lead poisoning and getting lead out of our community. But Congressman Caston happened to be there, and I had a very nice conversation with him. I sat at the table with him. So, it was really a great way to, again, to network. So, there's lots of opportunities to meet with our representatives. And if you didn't go down to Spring, Washington, you could always drop a copy of that federal agenda down to their office or when you see them at, you know, an event or something. So, there's lots of opportunities for us to meet with our congressional representatives. Thank you.
Yes, there are. Thank you. Mr. Zay, were you seeking recognition? Uh, Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I did want to address one issue, which is that Sunday was International Women's Day. It's not an official holiday here in the United States, but I am somebody who's been very lucky and very blessed by the women that have been in my life, from my mom, my incredible mother-in-law, my sisters, my sisters-in-law, my nieces and nephews and goddaughters, the people I've worked with professionally in the Marine Corps and my legal practice, the incredible leadership staff and staff that we have here at the county, many of whom are, are women that contribute incredibly to what we do here as a county, and my colleagues on this board. So, I just wanted to express my appreciation for what all of you bring to what we do and enhanced who I am as a person and what we accomplish here as a county. So, thank you.
Very nice.
I said, I did say my way.
Very nice.
I did.
Very nice. Mr. DCani? Hard to top that, Pete.
I know, absolutely. Better believe it. Scored a lot of points there. That's good. I wanted to mention, I brought up the topic of the Medicaid issue with ABA and the threshold